Just tap on that door and tell them we're going to gather. All right, I'd like to reconvene the meeting for the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, June 10th, 2020, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's see. With that, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Let's see, Kathy, do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor, roll call Rita.
Aye.
Kathy.
Aye.
Mary. Jim. And myself, all ayes. Okay, and with that, we will begin with board reports. Mary, is she unmuted?
I'm unmuting her, trying to unmute her now.
Okay, Mary, board reports, you're up first.
Jim, I think, is unmuted.
I unmuted Jim.
Maybe Jim should go first.
Mary is still not.
I've tried to unmute. Mary's got to unmute herself. There we go. No?
No.
Mary, could you, there you are. There you go.
Okay, there you go, Mary, you're on.
Okay, I have a lot of good news to report and many, many thanks that I want to give. I want to thank the superintendent and his staff and all the schools and Jeff Marr and his group for the 2020 high school commencement, which was done in person, which was live streamed, which was seamlessly put together. It was a wonderful job. In the beginning, it was a great challenge and the school system met the challenge. The parents were happy, the students were happy, and it was like, how in the world are we going to do it? And we got it done. So St. Mary's County Public School rose to the challenge. We have been through a lot within the last weeks. We provided online learning for our students. We served meals. Teachers have learned platforms. We have erected Wi-Fi hotspots. The seniors were celebrated with yard signs celebrating their commencement. The superintendent erected Wi-Fi hotspots for students, developed safe school return playbook for the employees where they can ask questions and get responses. Students were able to pick up their belongings. Learning packets were sent home for pre-K and K students and other students without bad access. And most of our vacancies were filled by the HR staff, and this was via Zoom. So we have accomplished a lot, and thanks goes to superintendent, executive team, administrators, principals, volunteers, building service staff, supporting service, Ms. Montgomery, everybody that made it successful. Public 19 came up. We were going full force, and we had to turn around and do something completely different, something that we had never done before, and the school system rose to the occasion and did it very well. So I want to thank everybody who contributed to the success, the many successes that we have had over the almost last 100 days. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Mr. Davis?
Is that for me?
Yes, you have a board report.
Really no board report. I'd like to echo what Mrs. Washington said. I was quite impressed with the ceremonies that was done on Channel 96, I believe. And I recall in last year during the commencement exercises, there was around, I guess, as close to 1,000 students in the three high schools. And I remember counting each person going by. It was like about eight seconds. Well, this time, it looked like it was 20 or 30 seconds. So Dr. Smith and the principals and all the people, I imagine, had to spend an enormous amount of time on their feet doing all the virtual coverage. So I just wanted to compliment the administration on that effort.
Thank you.
Nikina?
She's still muted.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, you're good.
Yep.
So on Saturday, May 30th, I officially joined the MASD, which is the Maryland Association of Student Council's executive board meeting. So this was the last board meeting of the year, so we swore in our new 2020-2021 officers and had a little recognition ceremony for all of the graduating seniors to commemorate their time in Maryland Association of Student Councils. And so then, on May 29th, my sister and I actually volunteered to help out with the drive-by lunch pickups at Margaret Bryan. So that was really exciting to get out and actually help as much as we could during this time. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mrs. Weaver?
So I had, after the graduation, virtual graduation, I had numerous parents call me and people that I've seen said, what a wonderful way to celebrate, just all positive things they had to say about it, how well organized it was. It flowed so easily from, like when they came to the parking lot, they had someone come out to the car and greet them, you know, to be given a number. They just said, so many positive things that they had to say about how it was done. So kudos to all the hard work and everyone that had a part of that. On another note, I have been extremely busy. Have to announce this. I had, three of my goats have kidded, and so right now, we have four baby goats in this past week, and I still have one that's due. She is huge and due any time. So excitement at my house. Lot of work, but it's, you know, just beautiful to watch, so.
Mrs. Allen?
I'm going to echo what Mrs. Weaver said regarding feedback about graduation. Really, to a person, people have shared how special it was, and for parents who were really concerned about what it was going to look like and that their child was somehow going to be short-changed because of the situation, they were astounded by the way, not only the school system stepped up, but others around the community who have gone out of their way to recognize these kids. And the funny one for me was the student or the graduate who said, you know, the best thing about it was, we just got to watch our part, do our part, and we didn't have to sit there forever. So, but the, but the parents really have said how special it was and how, especially, one lady I spoke with who said this was her fourth child going through the system and her, her last child going through the system, and that she was really concerned that, you know, her, this was not going to work out well. And she said, I think it was one of the more special ones, because she got to be up close and personal instead of, you know, way the heck back, trying to go, is that my kid? So as challenging as it was and as much work as it took, it was a resounding success. So congratulations to all, truly.
Right, I mean, same, same thing back. I've had emails from numerous parents and even students who enjoyed it. The, let's see, the Fake Jake, Still Jill, and Cut Out Kim were over the top. A lot of people really enjoyed that, and it was great because they, you completely captured the way each principal hands out the diploma, because if, if, if any of you have not sat through all three graduations, each principal does it a little differently. So that was good. And I know, I know at least Cut Out Kim is at various places around Chopticon High School, so.
Fake Jake and Still Jill have been making the rounds as well.
Yes, so there is, there is some humor in it. I mean, I just, I echo everyone's thoughts, and I know everyone's talking about graduation, but let's also not lose sight of the fact that all of our employees went back to work on Tuesday. There was a lot of work and preparation that went into that.
Absolutely.
Pretty much, I mean, I know it was in place prior to Governor Hogan's press conference a week ago today, but then to actually execute it and get everything organized was a huge, heavy lift for people that I'm sure are already overburdened with all of the, you know, stresses that we put on it just by the fact of being closed and everything else. You know, we went through Margaret Brent on Monday to pick up my son's stuff. It went seamlessly. To parents who haven't gone yet, for the, please read your emails so you understand the flow of traffic, because there were several families that were actually turned away from the exit because they were, you know, not going the right way. Just like the grocery store, everyone had, you know, there's a flow of traffic. So, but, you know, I mean, everything was pulled out of the classrooms. It was sorted and in bins by, you know, subject and class period for the, you know, for the kids to pick up. It was extremely well organized. And I think, you know, my son was in and out in probably under 10 minutes. So for those of you who haven't gone yet that you think the 20-minute time period is way too short, you know, rest assured it's not, because this was a 12-year-old boy who hit two lockers and, you know, four classes to pick up his stuff. So, you know, once again, hats off to everyone on that. I will just put one more thing in. We do have a joint meeting Tuesday, the 16th, at 9:00 in the morning with the county commissioners. The details of Zooming or WebinX or whatever are still in process. So, you know, that will all, I'm sure, be part of the press release as to, you know, which board is where and how people can dial in and things like that. So that is all still in process. So be on the lookout for that. And of course, there'll be a press release coming out regarding the agenda at some point as well. So, all right, and I turn it over to Dr. Smith.
Well, we'll, we'll finish with a discussion of and recognition for the, for graduation. There are just countless people to, to thank for that, and it is truly a testament to this community, because you see participation all across, all across the community by businesses and organizations, putting up signs and things such as that. Everybody knows that we hold very dear our class of 2020, and we will, they are truly a memorable group and will have memories, hopefully, to cherish. Really challenging times, really challenging times. Every single week brings with it new challenges, some expected, some unexpected. School system, our job is to educate and to communicate. And so for our parents and our students, we educate and communicate through the resources that we have available. We would like it to all be direct. We would like to be able to talk to you face-to-face. We'd love to be able to bring you in by group, but we can't. So we communicate through email, through phone messaging, through social media, Twitter, and sometimes Facebook, and through smore newsletters that go out, that are hyperlink to extensive Google Docs and.
Very important.
Maps. And it's, it's a, it's the parent's responsibility to engage in that and to read the email and to click on the smore and to go through all of that, because that's the only way that we can get information out. And it is exceptionally complex information that we're getting out right now, because we're trying to get 18,000 children into 28 different school sites to retrieve thousands of individual items, some small, some large, some not that important, some very important. And we want to give each the time and respect that it deserves to go gather that. So we are following all of the CDC guidelines, all of the recommendations from the Governor Hogan, from Governor Hogan, as well as our local county health office, officer for how people enter, with the mask that they wear. It is an incredibly choreographed event. That's happening at the same time that the governor has lifted restrictions. We've moved into stage two. Nonessential businesses are being cleared to open, which means nonessential employees are coming back into the workforce, which means that we have our administrators and our teachers and our support staff coming back to the work site. They're not coming back to work. They have been working. They're coming back to the work site, and please understand that we are offering them every flexibility that we can under the circumstance and situation. We are absolutely with fidelity doing the Families First medical leave options for people. We are using telework when it is appropriate to the position and the work that they're using. And when they do return to the work site, we are strictly following the CDC guidelines and protocols for the way in which they enter buildings and leave buildings. And really, the task at hand for the next two weeks is just to get all of the students' materials back to them, get all of the materials that they may have back into the school, and then it will be inventorying, putting away, recognizing what we have and what we don't to be prepared for whatever comes forward in the fall. All the teachers need to then come in and clean out their rooms and shut down all of theirs, and that will be next week. So there's, there was high school two weeks ago with seniors, high school last week, middle school and high school this week, and elementary school the, the following and final week. It's an incredible, it's an incredible amount of work, and I can't say enough to the way administrators, support staff, all of the maintenance, operations, logistics, safety and security, IT, all of them are coming together to put together a plan. And this all has to be done remotely, through Zoom, through all these different mediums, where sometimes it's really challenging to really gauge the reaction of the person that you're interacting with, because they're just in a little box. So it is, it is a brave new world. A challenge faces us pretty much every single day. Every challenge presents an opportunity, and that's an opportunity to get it right and an opportunity to get it wrong. And I'm really pleased that we have gotten it right much more than we have gotten it wrong over the last several months. The one thing that I have been, that, that certainly working with the association and working with, with employees as they transition back to the work site, is to recognize that there are hundreds and hundreds of employees who have absolutely followed the stay-at-home order with such complete fidelity that they have not been in another building, other than their home or their car or their community walking around, for 88 days. So for somebody who hasn't been in another building for 88 days and has so diligently and vigorously followed the stay-at-home order, we need to make sure that we really respect that, that we work with them, because their safety is, has got to be a system's priority, and it is. So we're working very closely with everybody to Leslie Fancella, to Dr. Farrell up in HR, to Dr. Montgomery, who works with all the principals, to all the principals who work with everybody, to Dr. Walker and Ms. McCourt and all the people that they report to. There are 2,000 stories of how people have worked their way through this, this school closure and the stay-at-home order, and, and we're listening to each one of them and trying to accommodate each. So it's great work. But with this, let me find Dr. Marr. Dr. Marr's on here someplace. Dr. Marr, can you, can you, can you, can you, can you pop out? Where are you? There you are.
Hello.
Yay. Dr. Marr, I very much like, because Dr., what can we say for this master thespian, this executive producer, this, this man who can put on a show, I really would like to have him kind of drive the, a little conversation about what went on with commencement and share some of the really fantastic data from, from how many people got to enjoy that great show. So with that, Dr. Marr, I've pulled up the, I pulled up the PowerPoint. Perhaps you could walk us through this.
Yes, first of all, I want to echo with what Dr. Smith said. This really was an ultimate team effort across the system. This was where everyone pulled together to do what we could for our students. People came from across the system, came together to ensure that the celebration of our students could happen for our students. Operations and maintenance staff worked together to build the stage, clean the space, set up tents, provide whatever was needed. Safety and security staff helped to direct the crowd, hand out masks, and provide support for our students, staff, and families. The sheriff's office was on hand to insist and show support for our graduates. Our students and teachers worked together to create unforgettable performances and videos to celebrate our seniors. School staff and administrators did unbelievable things, creating videos to celebrate students, putting yard signs on students' blondes, creating shout-outs for Twitter and welcoming and celebrating students as they crossed the stage, in addition to the everyday support that they give to help our students. And our digital media team captured these moments over two weeks to broadcast for our students, families, and community. During the last two, the last week of May, 1,162 students, 94% of our 1,238 graduates crossed the stage, received their diploma, and had their moment, the capstone of their 13 years. Two parents or guardians were able to see them graduate, and unlimited viewers could watch that moment live. Those moments were pieced together with other traditional graduation elements, including the presentation of flags by ROTC, performances by band, orchestra, and chorus students. Dr. Smith, could you go back to that last slide one more moment? Performance by band, orchestra, and chorus students, student and principal speeches, and photo montages from the year. These complete videos were then aired in a live premiere on our website, YouTube, and Channel 96. These videos are, they're posted on our YouTube channel. I wouldn't go to the next slide. So did people tune in? Yes. During the live walkthrough, nearly 14,000 people watched throughout the week. That's unique viewers. And when the full video premiered live, 7,590 few viewers tuned in. This could not have been done without the extraordinary dedication, time, and efforts of our staff. Earlier, I highlighted many, many people from across the system who made the event happen for our students. I want to shine the light on a couple of people who worked behind the camera and in the booth to pull this all together. Jason Priggin and Mary Ann Williams worked throughout the last several weeks, long days of planning and setting up, then editing over 65 hours of raw footage from a three-camera shoot to produce the 10 hours of commencement videos. Mr. Priggin and Ms. Williams are humble and would prefer to stay behind the camera, but today, we want them to come forward so we can say thank you to them for providing this memory for our graduates. So I'd like to ask them to come out of the booth where they're filming and broadcasting today's video production of this to say thank you. And Dr. Smith and board members, I will now turn it over to you to add whatever comments.
They need, so they can come up here. You stand right here.
There you go.
So everyone can see you. There you go.
Yeah.
And, and so we're in the Zoom world, so this is, here, let me, I want to make this, I want to make this window bigger, wait. Wait, here. This is, this is why I shouldn't be the director, right? But that's, so.
There you go.
Perfect.
So there we go. No, it's a big, it's a big, it's a big picture. Don't you talk, Josh. All right, stay on us. You can't imagine what it's like to edit and into final production over 10 hours of graduation footage from 65 hours from a three-camera shot, from multiple things that were done beforehand to kind of work their way, the way through, and to, and to stitch together the, the way it was. It is absolutely amazing. But more importantly, we spent, together, we spent 35 hours, I think, at the tech center, the day of filming. You spent two weeks before that setting it up, and then another week and a half before that, thinking out all of the logistics for it. Many, many, many hands were involved, but ultimately, yours were the final hands that created the memory that 1,200 kids get to carry with them for the rest of their lives. And not to get, I got a mask on, so you can't see I'm getting emotional, but not to get emotional, it, that's a, it's a beautiful thing. And in a time when we see so many things that are not beautiful, to see how you have worked on behalf of others is truly inspirational. So even though there's just a handful of people in this room, I want to clap for you and just say thank you very much. Because you clapped for 1,200 kids for four days straight. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. I won't ask you either to speak, and I just appreciate you allowing me to bring you forward, because I know that you're not comfortable on this side of the camera. But just, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. We will, we will hug later when we're allowed to. Thank you. And with that, I conclude my remarks.
Okay. We have no public hearings. We have any public, so public comments, since we don't have an open thing, open meeting, anyone can email. So we, we are still receiving public comment. We have none today. So with that, the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Joe, second?
I second.
All right, roll call vote. Rita?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Mary? Jim?
Aye.
And myself is aye. All right. The consent agenda is approved, and now we move to Ms. Cheryl Long with non-resident student tuition.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning. Let me screen share this.
Awesome.
Okay, non-resident student tuition. I am here this morning to talk to you about that. Information on non-resident student tuition can be found in the following regulations that are posted there on the slide. It's established annually by the Board of Education and adjusted annually upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. The rates are computed based on 180 days of school, and they can be, the rates are prorated for students who are enrolled in less than 180 days. After programs are charged half the rate. Parent, if parents are, if there are parents of non-resident students applying, then they have to complete an application and a contract. The payment is made to Fiscal Services on a semester basis, and it is waived for our staff members. Here you see the non-resident tuition rates, both the current rates and the proposed rates for in-state, out-of-county students and for out-of-state students. The rates are different for regular education students and special education students. The current rates for regular education students in-state, out-of-county are $6,423. The proposed rate is $6,839. For special education students, the current rate is $19,270, and the proposed rate is $20,517. For out-of-state students, for regular education students, the current rate is $12,872, the proposed rate being $13,324. And for special education students, the current rate is $38,616, and the proposed rate being $39,971. The next slide shows you how those rates are calculated. They are raised, excuse me, they, the rates are based on a pure pupil calculation and with the special education rate at 300% of the regular education rate. So you see, taking into consideration for that calculation is the total student population based on the September 30th, 2019 enrollment of 17,137 students, and the revenue budget for fiscal year 2021. If you look down to the bottom of that slide, you see exactly how those calculations are done, both for the in-state, out-of-county, and then the out-of-state calculations as well. And the recommendation is that the Board of Education approve this agenda item as presented.
All right, any questions? Mrs. Washington? She's still muted.
I'm sorry.
Hold on, I think she's still muted. Did you mute her, Scott, or, Mary, you have to unmute your thing.
There you go.
Now, yeah, yes, go ahead. Do you have any questions?
Yes. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Long, for giving this presentation. Thank you for giving the detailed calculation for how you come up with the tuition rates for the non-resident students, and thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Davis?
Mrs. Long, I remember a year ago, you said there's only one student, out-of-state students. Is that still the case? Could you tell us how many out-of-state students are paying tuition?
Yes, we actually have one student, and they are in, they are out of county, in-state, but out of county.
Out of county, okay. No out-of-state?
No out-of-state.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Nikina?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Weaver?
No questions. Thank you.
Kathy?
You answered my questions, Mrs. Long. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. May I have a motion?
I move, we approve the non-resident student tuition rates as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay. Roll call vote. Rita?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
And myself is aye.
Aye.
And myself is aye. All right, thank you, Mrs. Long.
Thank you.
All right, next up is, is the, I can never say her last name.
Paula Leano.
Leano, okay. Relocatable classrooms for Greenview Knowles.
Good morning!
Good morning. There you are.
I'm here today to request approval to use the Baltimore County Public School Contract, JBO 71619, for the purchase and installation of a two-classroom modular unit complex with two restrooms that will be placed at Greenview Knowles Elementary School with the contractor Modular Genius, Inc., in the amount of $282,094, and are also asking for a construction contingency in the amount of $20,000. The need for a relocatable at Green Holly is basically a consolidation from three to two locations for the Head Start program. Right now, we have Head Start in Benjamin Bannaker Elementary School, Greenview Knowles, and also at Green Holly. And it makes sense to consolidate into two for better functions, supervision, and operations of, of the program itself. And by moving the program from Green Holly to Greenview Knowles, it also helps the school Green Holly freesome space that they are in need for other state-required programs. The procurement method that we are recommending to use is the cooperative purchasing agreement with the Baltimore County Public School. Maryland State Law and SMCPS Board Policy, DJCR, encouraged the use of these cooperative contracts established by all of our agencies, provided bidding and procedures were followed. We've used a similar cooperative purchasing agreement also with the Baltimore County Public School last year when we purchased the last two sets of relocatables for Hollywood and for Evergreen. That contract expired last year, and Baltimore County pulled another bid out, and they, this is the one that we are presenting today, the JBO 71619. It's a five-year, seven-month contract that they have with the Baltimore County Public Schools. Their contract spending authority is $1.7 million, and Modular Genius being one of the three awardees. And the proposal for this relocatable is $282,094, and we are asking a construction contingency of about 7%, $20,000. We've used this contract extensively before, Diner, Lady Marshall Dam, Leonardtown Elementary, where some of the examples are the most recent ones, last year for Hollywood and Evergreen. The delivery is expected to be at the end of August. So if we get approved today, we were going to jump and get orders so we can provide before the start of the school. Sharing here with you the site plan of the location where we are proposing. In the back of the school, there is an existing modular complex we will be tying into it with our two, with our relocatable unit, and of course, adding accessible ramp and stairs to the project. The layout is very similar to the one we have in Evergreen, where it's a two-classroom with two accessible restrooms that are reachable from the vestibule. It's a 64 by almost 28 feet unit. Aluminum gutters and darts will be installed to grade. Electric 200-amp feeder will be connected to the main electric switchboard. 100, around 100 square feet of deck will be installed and canopy to connect into the existing canopy that is there in the complex. And this relocatable will be fire sprinklered, NFPA-approved. This will be the first modular classroom that we are buying with a sprinkler system. And I just want to give you a little bit of history. While we were doing this, effective October 7 of 2019, the Maryland State Fire Marshal's Office adopted the 2018 editions of the NFPA 1, which is a fire code, and the NFPA 101, which is a life safety code. And on the NFPA 101, the Section 1435 contains new requirements for sprinkler systems in educational buildings. Before, prior of this, we were not, we were not adopting it. Now it is for the state of Maryland. And the only exceptions to this rule is if the building is less than 1,000, if the building contains less than a single classroom, sorry, contains a single classroom, or if the building is not less, is not less than 30 feet from other structure. In this case, this modular classroom is almost 1,800 square feet. We have two classrooms right now, and we are relocating it less than 30 feet. So this, this is the reason why we are going with a sprinkler building. Data and PA system will be tied into the school system, and it is, they provide us a one-year warranty that is standard in relocatable classrooms. And at this moment, we ask the Board of Education to approve this agenda item as presented, and I am open for questions.
Okay. Mrs. Washington?
Hey, thank you so much for bringing this forward, and as you say, it's going to utilize the spaces that we have at Green Holly, Greenview, no, Green Holly.
Holly.
So that the students will be more centralized in that area and in another area. Also, I like the idea that there will be a sprinkler system, that the bathrooms are accessible, and it's going to have decking, canopy, and data and PA system, and that we have used this company in the past before, and you've done all your research, and so it looks good to me. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
Just so I can understand, the, the size of each module is approximately 27 by 67 feet?
The unit itself, yes. It's.
So, yeah, so if you.
20 feet by 64.
If you double that, you're talking about 3,400 square feet?
Yes, sir.
And divide that, divide that into approximately 300,000, you're about $88 a square foot. I just wanted to remark, that's pretty reasonable for a modular construction. So.
I don't.
If I, if I understand that correctly.
The, the unit is 64 by 27.5. So it, each of the two classrooms, it's 1,792, I mean, the two combined. So it, it's about 100, it's a little bit more than 150 square feet.
Okay, I, then I did, I made a calculation. You're saying.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's the double of what you said.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
I asked, I, I.
It, it's still good, sir.
Okay, that, that explains it. That's my question.
And, and just so, we have a little bit of history. We, I went back and looked at Evergreen, which is very similar, comparable, and on Evergreen, we spent $245,000, but that unit was not sprinklered. So if I add the $30,000 fee for sprinkling a building, not only sprinklered but tied into the existing wet system, which is the challenge here, we are doing, getting a very good rate.
Yes, I, I would, I would say so. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Nagina?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Is this the same company that did the modulators at Park Hall? Do you know? Because, I mean, they are fantastic in there. I've been in those.
Though, I think the, the ones at Park Hall were the ones that we bought. They were like the end of the, remember, they were the end of the, of the year line?
But then somebody came in and did all that.
Right, right. But so I, so I think, but I think we got a, we got a better deal on the, on the pricing and the type were different because that one was, that modular unit was being discontinued.
Okay.
So now this is, I'm sure is the one that's replacing it.
Yeah. So Park Hall, we have stayed relocatables. So the one we installed there last year, we moved it.
Right.
From, from Spring Reach to Park Hall, and we had to do some over-hold.
Okay. Because those, those came out really nice.
The last, the last set that we bought, it was the end of that, like, model year or whatever for that relocatable. So that's why we were pushing to get them done so we could get the PO in before they sold out.
Yep.
So.
I have another question for you. Where are you were locating it? And you're putting Head Start children in these locatables, or are you putting another class in there and moving Head Start to another area in the school?
It is my understanding that there is already one relocatable for Head Start in that complex. So by installing this relocatable, we will be able to centralize all Head Start in that complex.
Okay, so the other one is back there also, or somewhere in that area?
Yes, yes.
Yep.
Okay, the, the only concern that I had is getting these children from the relocatable to the buses and back, and, you know, I don't, I mean, are they going to have to go through another classroom? Or are they going around the building? I was just looking at that thinking, you have all these little children, that's if, if that's where they are going to be located and not in another area, to bring them around to the bus? The logistics of trying to, the teacher trying to do that, if they've already had.
That's what, that's the current practice. So I, I believe that they're, they're, they're brought down the, they're brought back in, they're brought back into the building and then down the hallway to, to the waiting bus loops out, out front.
I agree.
So it wouldn't be a change in practice, it's just one more classroom site there.
Okay.
And, and the fact that the relocatables have restrooms in the unit, we look for Head Start program.
Okay. I, I think that's definitely a plus because for trying to have the children leave there to go to another building and having to have a key, yeah, that's, so I'm glad they are doing that, and especially if it's modeled kind of after the ones that I've seen at Park Hall, it will be done very well. Thank you.
Okay.
You've answered all my questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, and I have no questions. So we, I need a motion, please.
I move that the Board of Education approve the use of Baltimore.
Wait, oh, oh, I'm sorry. What?
Sorry. Mary raised, Mrs. Washington raised her hand.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking, yes, Mrs. Washington.
We established.
Way to be, way to be beautiful there, Scott. Yes.
Thank you. I move that Board of Education approve the use of Baltimore County Public Schools Contract, JBO 71619, for the purchase and installation of a two-classroom modular unit complex with two restrooms at Greenview Knowles Elementary School from Modular Genius Incorporated in the amount of $282,094, and a construction contingency in the amount of $20,000.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, roll call. Rita?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
And myself is aye. Motion is carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, and for the last two action items, somewhere we have Mr. Widdon.
All right.
Maybe.
Good morning. How are you?
Good morning.
Fantastic.
So I'm here today to talk about Chopticon High School's wastewater treatment plant emergency generator replacement.
Okay.
Going to give you a little introduction to it. I'm here today to request the Board of Education's approval for the award of a contract in the amount of $62,555 to Line Load Contractors, Electrical Contractors Incorporated for the replacement of the emergency generator at Chopticon High School's wastewater treatment The, a little background, the existing emergency generator was installed in 2008, and unfortunately, on April 21st, 2020, the emergency generator at the wastewater treatment plant at Chopticon was destroyed by a fire. After the fire, it was determined the source of the fire was the emergency generator's battery charger, and as a result, the emergency generator was determined to be a complete, I'm sorry, a total loss. Currently, the, we have a temporary emergency generator has been installed to ensure continued operations of the wastewater treatment plant until the replacement can be completed. Some contract information, the installation of the replacement emergency generator is scheduled to be completed within 60 days after awards, that's about August 10. The replacement will be reimbursed by the Maryland Association of Boards of Education's property damage insurance, and the warranty that we specified was a two-year warranty from the date of substantial completion. The procurement method we use was an ITB, SMCPS 2020 MEGRP, was issued on May 1st and posted on e-mail marketplace, as well as the SMCPS Purchasing Office's bid board in accordance with the Annotated Code of Maryland 5112 and the Board, Board Policy DJC and Regulation DJC-R. The SMCPS Purchasing Office requested sealed bids from experienced and qualified contractors to perform the replacement of the emergency generator at the wastewater treatment plant, and on May 26th, only one or one sealed bid was received and opened. Line Load Contractors Incorporated was the lowest responsive bidder, fully met the requirements of the solicitation. We have worked with Line Load in the past. They recently did a, an emergency generator relocation from the old Bethune facility to Gray Girls High School. And with that, I'm here today to recommend or seek the Board's approval for this action item as presented.
Mrs. Washington?
Thank you. You said that the existing emergency generator was installed in 2008, so that gave us 12 years of life on that. And it was destroyed by a fire. So what will prevent this from happening in the future? When they.
There was no.
When it failed, does it catch on fire? It says.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. So the emergency generator's battery charger failed. There was no indications that it had failed, I know it sounds silly, that it was going to fail before it failed. There is a remote analyzer that tells us when things go wrong. It's also exercised once a week, and nothing was detected during the previous week's exercise. We don't know what happened. There's been no reports from the manufacturer of this happening before. We checked with Kohler. So I, I really can't say that nothing will prevent it from happening again. I just.
Is this a different kind, or is this the same kind?
Uh, the, it should be the same, it is the same size and specification, whether it's the same manufacturer, I'm unaware at this point.
Okay.
Once we award, I'll find out. We do have other Kohler generators in the system that have not, uh, problems.
Oh, good. Okay. And I like the idea that you're going to have a temporary generator that will be installed to ensure continued use, you know, while the other one is completed. So thank you for that. And the next thing I want to thank you for is making sure it's going to be completed on or about August 20. So that's good. So thank you very much for that.
Mr. Davis?
My questions were, were just answered. Thank you.
Okay. Nagina?
No questions. Thank you.
Rita?
No questions. Thank you.
Kathy?
No questions. You answered them. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. May I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve award of contract ITB, SMCPS 2020 MEGRP in the amount of $62,555 to Line Load Electrical Contractors Incorporated for the emergency generator replacement at the Chopticon High School wastewater treatment plant. The Board further authorizes a construction contingency of $8,800.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Roll call. Rita?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
And myself is aye. The motion is carried. All right, Mr. Widdon, if you want to move right into Town Creek and the storage tank replacement for the fuel oil?
Yes, ma'am. Is the president?
You're up. Scott has it up. We're good.
So I'm here about the Town Creek Elementary. So I am here about uh, the Town Creek Elementary School's underground fuel oil storage tank replacement. So some background, um, I'm here today to ask the Board's approval to award a contract in the amount of one hundred sixty-eight thousand three hundred and sixty-six dollars to Tide Water Incorporated for the underground fuel oil storage tank replacement at Town Creek Elementary. Uh, the existing fuel oil underground storage tank or U S T was installed in nineteen eighty-seven and has been in continuous use supporting the heating, hot water and domestic hot water systems of the school. The age of the existing underground storage tank is thirty-three years old with a life expectancy of fifteen to thirty years of age. Uh, the existing tank was installed in nineteen eighty-seven. Since this time, the school has also undergone two additions totaling about five thousand one hundred and thirty-eight square foot. And the heating, hot water pumping and generation capacity has been addressed with those re- renovations or additions, I apologize. But the size of the underground storage tank remains the same. Uh, this is planned, this is a planned replacement of underground storage tank. This project will replace an aging underground storage tank and increase the holding capacity by two thousand gallons to a total of six thousand gallons. This project will abandon the existing underground storage tank in place. This is being done because the location of the existing tank relative to the gym area's structural footers is too close. And M D E, the governing authority allows for that. I included this photo to give you an idea of where uh, the existing tank is and where the new tank will be. And who will be. Thank you. Some contract information, the replacement will be completed by October tenth, twenty twenty. The warranty coverage for the underground storage tank uh, is thirty years against internal and external corrosion and/or structural failure. The underground fuel piping, which is associated with this tank, has a ten-year warranty against leaks and failure. And the leak monitoring system has a two-year uh, warranty from the date of substantial completion. Just to make a comment, the modern tanks are not constructed of the same materials nor the piping leading from the tank to the building as they were thirty years ago. They went from metal with a tar outside. Nowadays, we're looking at double wall fiberglass tanks with interstitial spaces. We're looking at uh, a fuel piping that is actually double walled with an interstitial space also. The procurement method was an invitation to bid, S M C P S twenty twenty M as U S T R, R F two. Was issued on May twelfth, was posted to email on Marketplace and on the S M C P S uh, purchasing office bid board in accordance with annotated code of Maryland again and board policy D J C and D J C R. The S M C P S purchasing office requested sealed bids from experienced contractors and qualified, experienced and qualified contractors to perform the fuel tank at Town Creek. On June second, twenty twenty, uh, four bids were received and opened. Tide Water was the lowest responsive responsive bidder and fully met the requirements of the solicitation. And I'm here today to ask the Board approval of this item as presented.
Mrs. Washington?
Thank you, Mr. Witten. Um, we definitely got our money's worth on this underground fuel tank cause it wasn't supposed to last between fifteen and thirty years and we got thirty-three years out of it. So I'm sure that's a testament to the work that your group has been doing to keep everything working. So square footage has been added to the building and thank you for also having a planned replacement instead of a failed replacement that you are doing, uh, you're proactive and taking care of things that we don't have a failure rate you ahead of what's going on. Since the school's uh, capacity increased, um, we needed to add extra capacity to this uh, fuel tank. And we have a better warranty, we have a better product and we have more capacity. So thank you for covering this course and thank you for the planned replacement.
Mr. Davis?
May I make a short comment?
Yes, you may.
As far as the planned replacement, uh, thank you very much, Ms. Washington. The Board's been very supportive uh, as well as the people I work with over here in capital and design and construction. It takes um, on average, about ten years to get a project from uh, a planned phase to fruition. And and here in the past year, I've seen a lot of, I've noticed a lot of planned projects are being done that we sat down and talked about it and organized um, about nine to ten years ago now. Um, so thank you, Ms. Washington, but it wasn't just me. It takes a lot of work from a lot of people.
Thank you for the team effort.
Mr. Davis?
Uh, Mr. Witten, um, is there a sufficient contingency if there is any contamination when you replace the tanks?
I believe there should be. If there's not, I'll have to come back to the Board, of course, but we've had no, we've had no leak detections and we've had um, only one uh, leak detection on the fill sum. Uh, you test the tank and the fill sum separately. If we do have any leakage uh, or contamination, we expect it to be around the fill. And we already had some remediation soil included in the original contract.
Correct. Uh, the reason I I posed the question is I had an experience, we purchased some property a number of years ago, a gas station. And I, we got a real good deal on it for about half a million dollars. It remediation cost us two million. And the reason was we didn't do our homework and there was a lot of contamination of the soils. So that is always a red flag for me uh, when you're doing uh, replacing fuel tanks.
Yes, sir. I completely understand. I've been in that situation at least probably twice in my career. Yes, sir.
Nagina? Okay, Nagina?
No questions, thank you.
Rita?
My question is, did you have to work with the E P A at all or not that Town Creek Elementary School is right on top of, it's the Lewis Creek? But um, I didn't know if there is like a uh, yardage footage uh, as being so, you know, within a uh, the watershed or the tributaries that lead into the Chesapeake Bay with doing a project like this?
Uh, the answer is yes and no. We work through M D E, which which requires the same as the E P A and the paperwork. And the process is passed up through there. And no, the the Town Creek is not within the hundred-foot zone or close to water. So we don't have to deal with um, those requirements. Uh, but we have in the past, but not on this project.
All right, thank you.
Kathy?
Um, so as I understand it, we are abandoning the old tank in place, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have to disturb it at all? Is there a need for a contingency? In other words, how will you abandon that tank? Um, what will you need to do? Will you need to disturb the soil at all or?
No, not typically. What what happens is they they empty the tank, they, somebody actually has to get in there and clean the entire tank out. They have to take test samples around the tank of all the soil, which is also included in the project. And then what they do is they fill the tank with the slurry uh, to the top. And then they abandon the, they leave the monitoring wells in place, which are smaller holes around the tank. But they abandoned the manhole and the fill hole.
Okay, and where you are putting the replacement, um, will that disturb playground or asphalt or anything like that? Or is that separate from this area?
It it will disturb asphalt. Um, we coordinated an asphalt relaying job at um, Town Creek Elementary School this year also on purpose. So the the asphalt will be repaired by the tank contractor, but we're doing a complete overlay at Town Creek. So we coordinated two planned projects to come together and address that. It will not affect the playground. And I tried to fit the word playground into the picture in my slide to give you an idea where it was and it just wouldn't. I couldn't get it to to look.
That's quite all right. I remember uh, when we um, broke ground for the gym and then when we dedicated the gym. Um, so that's why I asked the question. I I knew what was outside of there. Um, but I appreciate that you tried to put it in there for us. Um, thank you very much. Uh, and also appreciate the the work that you've done to to coordinate this um, the the two projects together. So um, thank you for the information you've given us and especially for explaining how you will abandon um, what what you have to go through in order to um, to deal with uh, um, um, leaving the the old tank in place. So thank you.
Very welcome.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Witten. May I have a motion?
I move that the.
Mary, raise your hand. Go ahead, Mary.
Move that the Board of Education approve the award of contract I T B S M C P S twenty twenty M U S T R two in the amount of one hundred sixty-eight thousand three hundred sixty-six dollars to Tide Water Incorporated for the underground fuel oil storage tank replacement at Town Creek Elementary School. The Board further authorizes a construction contingency of twenty-three thousand dollars.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Roll call, Rita?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Mary? Then I.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Jim?
Aye.
And myself as aye. Motion is carried. All right, Mr. Witten, you're all set to go. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Witten.
All right, let's see. We have Ms. Van Sella and Ms. Long on mental health and wellness for our students and employees, for everyone.
Well, hello, Mrs. Long.
And back again. Here we are and Ms. Van Sella is joining me. You've heard many presentations in past meetings about supporting continuous learning focused on academics. Ms. Van Sella and I are here this morning to share how some, how Saint Mary's County Public Schools is supporting the mental health and wellness of our students, staff and our families. Um, we are certainly in a time when our students, families and staff may be experiencing a variety of challenges. Uh, school buildings are closed, but we are not disconnected from our students and our families. Uh, each of our schools are continuing their efforts to connect with students and families in a variety of ways grounded in their multi-tiered system of support, framework and school-wide expectations. Tier one, tier uh, tier one and two team leader meetings provide an opportunity for school teams to share, uh, to come together virtually to share different things they are doing to stay connected and support students and families. Um, the schools are adapting school-wide expectations for home. You see exam, I know it's difficult. We've, there's so much that we wanted to share. There's only so much we could put on a slide. But you can see, um, hopefully, um, through examples such as the Home Hoop coming out of Greenview Knowles Elementary School, newsletters shared with resources, Raider Strong has adapted their school-wide expectation matrix uh, for distance learning. Schools are using Twitter, YouTube channel to continually share their school news and just many, many more um, uh, things that schools are doing to share and stay connected with students. Um, we are using, or schools, um, are using the tier fidelity inventory and staff and family surveys. Um, we'll continue to evaluate what we are doing and need to do to meet student needs uh, through those tools. There are resource folders for schools that um, our M T S S district team has filled with resources and also school teams have shared resources amongst each other. So that is housed in a resource folder uh, for schools to access. And um, you see that sample right there of planning uh, for return to school, which is so, so important for us when we think about the mental health needs of students and families. And you can see uh, probably that bottom right side of the slide where we're looking at, um, you know, uh, what's happening now a month before we return, six weeks, where we're just really trying to strip that out and school teams are working through that process now. Uh, I'd like to walk you through the um, supports that are coming out of the Student Services Department specifically. Our school psychologists are creating and sharing resources with staff and students and families through newsletters. Um, they have a Twitter account. The department also has a Twitter account where we're um, putting out information and resources and emails, through emails and videos as well. Uh, our our psychologists are participating in many meetings that are going on virtually, five or four I E P, school staff meetings and also department meetings. Um, they are counseling students via the Doc C Me platform. That's the video uh, platform that we're using for counseling. They are supporting the mental health response tiered efforts and I'll talk about that a little bit later on in the presentation. They are um, continuing to attend professional development virtually and and really, there are so many good professional development um, opportunities out there right now by leaders in the field of mental health. And they are continuing to bring back information to our tier one and tier two team leader meetings. And then that information is funneled back to school staff on how to support um, students uh, and staff as well. And our pupil personnel workers, they are connecting uh, families with mental health services. They are doing their best at work with email and phone contacts. They are, you know, just eager, of course, to reconnect with their families through home visits um, for some time in the future. But they are continuing to eliminate barriers to promote well-being for students uh, and their families. They're partnering, continuing to partner with our uh, wealth of community agencies um, for students. And as coaches, um, for the M T S S's coaches, they are working with school teams to continue to provide them support and information that they can then push out to their students and families. Um, our school nurses are providing support to students and families through email correspondences. And you see some examples there of the nurse newsletters that are going out. Uh, not only are they providing support, but they're providing resources as well. Um, they are also participating in um, professional development. And most of their efforts through their professional development are going towards what's, what it will look like for students, um, staff and families when we reopen school. Our school counselors have developed tier one lessons that are accessible to all students focused on social emotional curriculum. And um, students access those uh, lessons through the online learning platform just as students access the academic uh, lessons. Um, you can see samples there of what's happening. Um, you see in the bottom left-hand corner, teachers, there's videos of teachers reading aloud stories to students. Um, up in the top right corner, there on um, uh, through Class Dojo out of Lexington Park, the counselor there is doing mindful moments where she does breathing exercises and students can do that and engage in breathing exercises with um, counselor Linda Ball. Uh, it, this is similar or just an extension of what happened in the school. So for example, Ms. Ball did that with her students every Friday Lexington Park and students can, uh, they can continue that same um, uh, exercise even from home. So so that's, you know, that's our focus is really that, that um, continuity for students and something, you know, providing um, resources for them that they are familiar with. For our secondary students, now the answer's been um, a very good resource for us. Uh, you see a, an example of a lesson there. But students are used to um, accessing that um, resource and then they can continue to for social emotional um, pieces as well. Our school social workers, again, they are continuing um, to extend their services that they had in the schoolhouse with students into the homes through telecounseling. They are providing their case management services, the cognitive behavior therapy that they did in the school now through uh, the video counseling and also providing aftercare services. They um, are supporting the school-based teams through the tier two intervention, which I'll talk more about in just a minute. And also um, pushing out self-care resources to staff at the schools. So this is our mental health response. This we develop since we have been out of school. Um, this visual and this resource for our school staff, it was provided to our schools early on to support concerns or needs of students that were coming in um, through email or uh, you know, as teachers were um, in contact with students or other staff were in contact with students. So it it, I apologize, we, again, we try to fit a lot of things on the slide. But basically what you're seeing in that um, that tiered matrix there, the triangle, is on the left side, you see student concerns. So concerns that are coming in in tier one, maybe students not engaging in online learning, similar to what you would see in the classroom when they put their heads down on their desk. And then on the right side is the staff response, what staff should do if they see um, that students are not engaging in their online learning. Tier two, um, parents maybe are expressing that uh, there's excessive worry or anxiety that they're seeing on behalf of their students. And then on the right side, again, the staff response, what that looks like. And staff um, can fill out a school-based referral for support. So there's an online referral that that teacher can fill out. And that um, goes right to support and the support is given, the referral goes to support uh, through P P W counselor or a school psychologist, um, provides support at the tier two level. Um, tier three, if there's significant concerns from a student, significant anxiety, depression, um, then we are able to offer. then we are able to offer one-to-one telecounseling, and that is through the social work team that is doing that. So, the referral is made, again, directly to the social workers, and they will, in their response, they are linked with family to provide that support. Also, you see on this slide, the St. Mary's County Public Schools update number nine, just to give you an example on one of those, the community updates that go out. We do push out information on mental health resources for families as well. And then on our St. Mary's County Public Schools website, that big button on the bottom right, mental health resources, that link takes families to a number of resources that can be accessed in our community. And Leslie?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am in awe of the work that Cheryl and her Student Services team have been providing to our families. You know, they're reaching 18,000 kids. They're doing an amazing job. And I wanted to take a moment to highlight that Human Resources is trying to do to support our employees from a mental health standpoint during this pandemic. And I think the most important thing that we've tried to do is socialize the importance of and the availability of the counseling and free and confidential support for employees and all of their household members through our Employee Assistance Program. Our vendor for our Employee Assistance Program is Inova. They are part of the Fairfax Inova Medical System, and they've been really phenomenal to deal with. They're offering in-person counseling when social distancing isn't a concern. And right now, they're doing via phone and/or also via telehealth counseling. One of the things that our employees have been accessing is we're, you know, going back to work in our buildings, is the childcare referrals and elder care referrals, and then legal and financial assistance. You know, we've got lots of folks that, you know, as a school system, we're continuing to pay our employees, which is absolutely fantastic for the good work that they're doing. But we do have people whose spouses have been out of work. And so, these resources are widely available. They're linked on our website. And we've also made these links live so that this presentation could be a resource. Our Employee Assistance Program is available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Every day of the year, there's an 800 number, and there's also an online link for resources and services there. So, we're encouraging all of our employees to access that resource for care. In addition, you've heard me visit you a number of times talking about video visits. We are, SMCPS is covering Care First video visits for our SMCPS insurance participants and all of their family members who are insured during the pandemic. We're covering all of that at 100%. And so, there's no copay at all if folks need to access non-emergent care. You know, with testing going on in some of the urgent care facilities, we've had folks sharing that they're concerned about, you know, going out and potentially exposing themselves. And so, this is a great way of getting some non-emergent medical assistance through the video visit platform, and it's free to all of our employees and their family members. In addition, Care First enhanced the video visit platform, and now it includes mental health services. Folks can schedule a visit with their psychol- with a psychologist or therapist. And again, those are all covered at 100%. Another enhanced service, breastfeeding support and lactation support. We've had a lot of babies born to SMCPS staff members during this pandemic. And it's a very stressful time. Those types of supporters typically found, you know, in groups at the hospital. And, you know, these new moms are pretty isolated. So, this has been a great thing to have, to offer as I'm working through maternity leave and what that looks like for folks during the pandemic. In addition, diet and nutrition, consulting with a certified nutritionist. You know, we've all heard the jokes about the COVID-15, or, you know, you've got time to make those home-cooked meals. So, we've had a number of people express interest in getting back on track with their wellness activities. And this is another free service that is available to our employees through the video visit platform. Dr. Smith briefly mentioned the flexible schedules and telework, and I can tell you that that's had a huge impact on the well-being and mental health of our staff members. You know, as we're working through and learning about all of the things going on in our current world, that flexibility, the ability to telework, you know, schedule your work time perhaps at a time when you're not trying to help your child with distance learning, has been very, very good for our staff members. But we've also got a number of new federal laws that have had implications for staff members. And socializing these options for folks have helped, especially as we, you know, we opened back up on Tuesday, and folks are coming back to buildings. There are people that aren't able to for a number of reasons related to COVID-19. And so, the Families First Coronavirus Relief Act offered some additional leave options that are above and beyond what we have negotiated with our associations for employees. And so, the, there are six reasons related to COVID-19 that folks might be eligible for either full pay or reduced pay options if they're not able to continue to telework, or if maybe their position isn't eligible for teleworking, because some simply aren't. And the first three reasons are full pay for up to 10 days for our employees if they are subject to a quarantine or isolation order, for example, if they've had to go get testing. And we certainly don't want them back in the buildings until, you know, that it's safe for them and for everyone else to go. They are eligible for up to 10 days of paid leave. But again, is above and beyond their own accumulated leave, and they would use that leave first. If they've been advised by a health provider to self-quarantine related to COVID, perhaps they are vulnerable or an at-risk population, they would be eligible for those 10 days of paid leave. And experiencing symptoms, seeking a medical diagnosis, we know that the testing is definitely improving. Sometimes these results are taking seven days, sometimes they're next day. And so, taking, reassuring our folks that, you know, here's this leave, you just need to stay home, take care of yourself, is very, very helpful. So, all of those reasons, it would be 10 days of paid leave, full pay, up to a maximum of $511 a day. And then the three remaining reasons are at 2/3s pay. Perhaps they're caring for someone that's received a quarantine order. Maybe they're caring for a child whose school or daycare is closed. We've got a lot of employees that are kind of in that situation. Obviously, we are closed. So, we know SMCPS is closed, and we're not supervising those children while their parents are at work. And daycares are not fully open yet. So, we do have some employees that are in this situation right now. Number six, not really sure what that means yet. We haven't had anybody- Department of Labor's not actually sure what it means yet. But they did write in, any other substantially similar condition would be eligible for that 2/3s pay up to two weeks. And the Department of Labor poster is linked there, and that has also been posted in every site. And it's on the Safe Return Playbook, along with the leave form that is required for receiving this additional paid leave. The additional part of the Families First Coronavirus Relief Act is that their Family Medical Leave Act has been expanded. And so, folks are eligible for an additional 10 weeks of paid family medical leave for daycare, sports, healthcare, schools being closed. And so, that is the only provision that has an extension beyond the two-week period, that childcare has an additional 10 weeks available under the Family Medical Leave Act, which was part of the Families First Coronavirus Relief Act. Next slide. Thank you. And another law that has impacted our employees that we are working through is the CARES Act, mainly financial things. But, you know, as I mentioned, we've got a lot of folks whose households have been negatively impacted financially. There was a COVID-19 coverage mandate. We actually had this as a state mandate in advance of the CARES Act, and we chose to implement it here at SMCPS. We tend to follow what the state requires us to do. And so, all expenses related to COVID-19 are covered at 100% through our health insurance plans. And so, that could be testing done outside of the health department. Or, you know, say you've got a patient transport, or an inpatient admittance, or perhaps expenses after, medical expenses related to recovery. All of those things are covered at 100% for our insured employees. Enhanced unemployment benefits. This one, you may have already heard about, although we're trying to handle them as quickly as we can. We've got hundreds of employees, our substitute employees and temporary hourly employees who are not continuing to receive a paycheck. Those folks are paid when they work, and as a result of the school closures, we haven't, unfortunately, we haven't needed to have our subs report. And so, they're eligible for unemployment through this expansion. Typically, substitutes are not paid unemployment over the summer. Summer breaks are a known component of accepting employment with SMCPS or with any school district, and so, they're ineligible over the summer. But the school closure was not scheduled, and certainly not a normal break. And so, our substitutes are eligible for unemployment. At this point, I think I've had about 300-plus subs apply for unemployment. And this Coronavirus Relief Act will provide SMCPS some financial benefit in the form of reimbursement, because we are a reimbursable employer. We pay those expenses. As unemployment claims come in, we pay them, and the CARES Act provides for 50% unemployment. We certainly have never seen this type of unemployment requesting. Hope to never see it again. We're working very hard to respond to all of the DLLR inquiries so that our subs get paid. And that's, it's happening very slowly. We've got about 90 that have received pay out of, you know, almost three times that have filed. The CARES Act also provided changes to the flexible spending account eligible items. We sent out an email about this to all of the flex spending participants. This is, was a pretty big deal, because it allows folks to buy over-the-counter items that were historically ineligible for coverage. And the CARES Act included those because of things like sinus meds and cough relief and pulse oximeters, and all kinds of things that are needed to care for yourself during this pandemic are now eligible to be purchased using flex spending. We've got four or five, 500 employees that participate in that. And so, letting them know that they can use those dollars for these newly eligible items. When many people elect to set up flexible spending because of procedures or, you know, dental expenses, that sort of thing, and all of that has been on halt. So, allowing more purchases through flex spending has been very helpful. Our fabulous payroll department has worked on the student loan relief that was brought out as part of the CARES Act. And so, there are certain types of student loans that do not need to be paid right now, that those payments can be deferred. And Ms. Malin has taken care of that for our folks that have student loans coming out of their paychecks. And our supplemental retirement accounts, to be clear, not Maryland State Retirement Accounts that everyone participated in, but supplemental retirement, our 403D accounts, 457 accounts, are now eligible for coronavirus distribution and loan. If folks are negatively financially impacted by COVID or experience a COVID diagnosis, they can receive distributions from their retirement accounts. And that's a very special provision that historically has not been allowed to get a distribution at any time for, you know, for these reasons is hopefully going to help some of our folks that are starting to be affected. And then really, I, all of these are important, but I think this is the most important. Cheryl and her team are doing an amazing job of putting out communication for families and students. And Dr. Marr, I can't say enough about the resource that he coordinated all of the resources, but in specific, the Signal. He sends out a bi-weekly communication to all staff members. And every, every other week, he sends a reminder, you know, I need to have your items, I need to get them in there, which is really helpful, because we know how important that is, and it can get lost. So, I'm grateful for his vigilance. In the Signal, we widely share the EAP resources that I linked in an earlier slide, the health insurance information as it changes, or just a reminder, please use video visit. We really want you to have your health needs taken care of, because some folks are really, you know, they're afraid to go to the doctor right now. We want them to get their things taken care of. Payroll information, there was a lot of, when this first started, there was a lot of concern being shared on social media about SMCPS folks not getting paid, and that has never been the case. Payroll is working very, very hard to ensure that there is zero interruption in pay. And so, Dr. Marr's regular communication of the Signal, we use to reiterate, everyone's still getting pay, you know, please don't panic. Social distancing wellness information, Care First is providing us with a lot of really great resources, and we're linking those into the Signals as well. And then finally, my favorite thing, we're doing, we're using Zoom a lot, as I'm sure you guys are too. But we're doing virtual HR visits. Just because we're in the middle of a pandemic doesn't mean that folks don't still have concerns over retirement. You know, their health insurance concerns, leave concerns. We had to host open enrollment virtually, which was great news for us. And so, I've spent hundreds of hours talking with employees about what's going on in their family, what's their health situation, you know, do you, is it time for you to retire because you've got all of these health concerns, you know, those types of things. And the continued ability to keep in touch with our employees, listen to them, hear their concerns, help them through all of these decisions that they need to make has just been, I think, one of the best things that we're able to do, just to stay in touch. I've noticed that a lot of folks that I visit with are living alone. And so, it's good to just, to be able to have that contact. And with that, I am done.
Mrs. Washington? I just want to jump in as we finish here, and just really thank you for the opportunity to share this information with you. You know, Ms. Vancella and her team in Human Resources and the Department of Student Services, you know, we really, it's so, so important that we support our students and our families and our staff right now through this with, you know, their mental health. And I just can't say enough, I am so grateful for the folks that we have on our teams here. We, you know, really have gone above and beyond to, you know, really support schools and school staff in getting those, that information, the supports out to our families and students, and Ms. Vancella, as she presented to our staff as well. Any questions or comments?
Mrs. Washington?
I have a lot of comments. You have given a very comprehensive presentation, and you have covered a lot of ground, and you are doing so much work. So, I want to thank Ms. Long and Mrs. Vancella and their staff for doing a tremendous job. You have been resilient, you've been flexible, you've been creative, and you've been innovative. And somebody said, if you want to work hard, you go in education. And if you want to work the hardest, you go in education. And that's what you have been doing. So, even though the school buildings have been closed, the work continues. And there are new laws, new acts, new changes, and you are taking care of our students, our families- and you are taking care of our students, our families, our employees, Employee Assistance Program, the telehealth support, and the system is here to help the employees and the students. So your presentation was about mental health. So we know that mental health is vital to the success of students' mental, social, academic, and emotional success. And I appreciate the teachers and all the schools for virtually maintaining a connection with their students, because that helped them a lot. Because school closed, it happened suddenly, and that connection, their normalcy was broken. But I want to congratulate the schools and the teachers for what they're doing. And I do watch Mrs. Wong mindful moments. She does, I think, every day with the students, because whenever I go on Facebook or Twitter, I see her doing the mindful moments. And they are just wonderful. I want to congratulate the schools for creating and sharing their best practices. There are so many things the schools are doing. They're reading stories to students. I've seen our school psychologists on Twitter and Facebook deal with a variety of topics that I just don't even have to do the research is there. One was on how to talk to your children about COVID-19 and other stressors that might be in their life. So our website has a tremendous amount of information there. And there are teachers reading stories to students about the emotions and how you're feeling. And the mental health resources are plentiful on SMCPS website. There's a lot of information there. And if anybody, employees need help or students need help, all you need to do is connect. And you have done a tremendous job of making it easier. And I could go on and thank so many other people, our school psychologists, our school nurses, PPW workers, our counselors, and social workers. And all of these people contribute to our bottom line, student achievement, and students fulfilling their potential to be the best person they can be. In order to do that, they have to be in good mental health, and so that they can be successful and be contributing members of society. So thank you all for what you are doing and will continue to do. I'm just very proud of all of you and your staff. You've been working very hard. And the citizens, many of them realize what you've been doing. I know I do, because it's out there and it is available. Thank you so much.
Mr. Davis? Jim, do you have anything?
The only thing I would ask is, you have these wonderful resources, and you were talking earlier about telecounseling. I was curious if you got any data at all on how well it's being used by the students, parents, and, you know, the stakeholders?
So the social workers were meeting, most specifically the social workers, you know, with their sessions that they were having with students. I mean, it, it really literally just transferred right over to the virtual platform. All of the students are still connecting, the ones that, that we were supporting in the school. So we are, we are definitely collecting data and, and will continue to review that, but we have had, I want to say, like 99% success with that.
Great. That was my only question. You got this wonderful resource. Is it used?
Absolutely.
Thank you. That's all I got.
Nagina?
Speaking specifically for your students' viewpoint, it's very important that we assure the mental health of students, especially since at this time, we as students, people, like, there's so much out of their control. And like Ms. Wong had said, it's good to continue practices that students are familiar with. And I can speak specifically for Leonardon High School. They've been doing Instagram Lives, daily vlogs, LTV news broadcasts, and I'm sure that students, or, sorry, schools around all over the county have been doing similar things and coming up with creative ways to connect with students. And we really appreciate all the work that is being done.
It really is amazing what's coming out of our schools and our school teams. I mean, you know, like you said, Ms. Washington, I mean, they really, that, that is the forefront too of, you know, what they're thinking about. It's, it's just amazing.
Okay, Rita?
I'm going to say you and your staff have really put a lot of time, effort, and creativity into being able to reach out to the students, the staff, and their families. Great job.
Thank you.
Kathy?
I'm really grateful that these services are available for, for our students, but also for our staff. I know the first time I went out after having been at home for, you know, couple of week period after the stay-at-home order was put in place, and, you know, and I'm generally a fairly courageous person, going out and doing things. But, but it really gave me pause to think, what's this going to be like? And I really found myself going, yeah, maybe I, maybe I don't want to go out. And I finally had to, and it was a good thing because I was able to demonstrate to myself that I was successful in it. There wasn't anything to be afraid of. I just had to use common sense measures. But having that resource available to say to people, you know, let's talk about what's going on with you, and, and finding a way to help employees, especially as they transition back into the next phase of things, I think is really important. And I'm grateful, because I, I don't know that all school systems have the kind of resources or, or share the kind of resources in the way that, that SMCPS has. And I really think it's a credit to the, the system for what you've put out and, and the work that you've done to make it so accessible for people. So thank you very much.
I, I just, I echo everyone else. I mean, there's a tremendous amount of work. There's a lot of information and a lot of resources. And you have basically taken, I think, what's in every single of your staff's minds and, like, put it out on paper, or on a website, or on a link, or something that they, people could get help immediately if they needed it. And if not, then, you know, what the process is to get additional help. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. And our last is Ms. McCourt with our financial reports.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Well, Dr. Smith is bringing that report up. Just a reminder that the May financial reports are actually your last financial report that I will present on a monthly basis for this fiscal year. The next final report will actually be presented by the auditors in August, in October. So on the revenue side, we have collected $225.4 million of our $226.5 million budget, representing 99.5% of our revenues collected to date, or a balance of $1.1 million. We have received 100% of the county appropriations and 100% of the direct state aid appropriations. Moving on to the expenditure side, we have encumbrances outstanding of $36.5 million, year-to-date encumbrances and expenditures of $220 million, leaving a remaining balance currently of $6.5 million. We currently have expensed our encumber of 97.11% of our budget. You'll see that we have numerous budget adjustments that took place in May. As we have been coming through our financials, we have realized some budgetary savings as a result of the school closures, and we've immediately started putting those funds to use. Most importantly, of note, would be the use of many of the funds in appropriate categories that became available that we could put towards the purchase immediately of school laptops and computers, which are expected to be delivered by the end of this month. Are there any questions?
Mary, Jim, Nagina, any questions?
No questions.
No questions.
Rita? Kathy?
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So let's see. Our next regular board meeting will be on June 24th. Right now, once again, it's scheduled for an evening meeting, so most likely will be moved to morning. Watch for the press release. And just a reminder that we do have the joint meeting with the county commissioners next Tuesday, beginning at 9:00 a.m. So once we get details on how that will look, that will definitely be out and about. All right? Thank you very much. We are adjourned.